You guys. About ready? We're gonna wait till exactly eight thirty. There it is. Well, good morning, everybody. This is Delta County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting, October twenty one, twenty five. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Is there any additions, changes, edits to our agenda this morning?
Under Commissioner Business, we'll remove item number three and postpone that until a later meeting for its consideration of an exemption plat for the Carpenter East subdivision.
Very good. Did you have anything, Terry?
I did not, thank you.
The agenda will stand as amended. Uh, constituent time. Would anybody like to address the commissioners this morning?
Is it time for me now?
You bet. Come on up here, make sure that mic is on.
I'm Cody House. Just push that button right there.
Go ahead, see.
I'm Cody House with the Hotchus Cemetery, and I want to bring up a thought of combining cemetery districts in the county, or at least North Port Districts. I don't know. I think it'd take a lot of work to get done, but my thought is to improve the cemeteries. They're aging. Our irrigation pipes are terrible, and it costs a lot more money now to put those pipes in. And to pay our employees, like pay them a good, fair, living salary. Maybe you can get even health insurance kind of thing. So that's, that's my thought, is improve cemeteries, help out the employees, less boards. Um, yes, what I have. If you guys have anything that could help us.
How many feet of pipes would need to be switched down?
Well, we were talking about, like, we have, like, half of our pipeline is nineteen hundred foot, and then we just got a bit of, like, forty thousand dollars, and it's, it just, it's hard for cemeteries on the budgets that we have to do that kind of thing. So this year, we just had our backhoe rob. Somebody broke in and stole the turbo exhaust pipe, intake pipes off of it. Cost us four thousand dollars to fix. We didn't, didn't plan on that, so, yeah.
Cody, have you visited with any of the other cemetery?
I've talked to Crawford and Powna, and yeah, we'll try and talk more about it, but I'm just kind of bringing it up now, like, this is nothing for sure at all yet, obviously, and, and you say it may take a voting measure to get them combined into being special. So, so yeah, just want to kind of bring it up and get talking about things like this.
So there's one cemetery in Peonya?
Two in Peonya, one in Crawford, one in Hotchus.
Peonya, Powna, and then the one out on the hill by the gas station?
Yeah, there's, yeah, Bethlehem and Cedar Hill, yeah. And then, yeah, Corey and Eckert and Cedar Edge, I don't know how many Delta hands. But it's, it's a lot of them, and I don't know if it could ever get combined to have a couple, like, full-time employees that are paid a decent wage. Yeah.
So you share equipment out there now?
No, no, we have old equipment. So, no, all the cemeteries are separate. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to introduce you to Perry Stevenson, our county clerk. She would be your first to discuss this again.
Okay.
Um, and it definitely is going to have to be something that you're going to discuss with all of the cemetery districts, but yeah, because they are special districts, that would have to, have to be looking, so we can definitely get you some information. Um, Cody, did you put your phone number on there? If you can add your phone number on there, let me, um, hit some information to you, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
And then Cody, Jolene is right behind you. She's county assessor regarding the boundaries of the districts, and so you'd work with her as well.
Okay.
Make that connection.
Would this have to be on the ballot?
Well, that's what we have to determine, but I believe it would.
There's a lot of footwork between now and then.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an interesting concept, and I'm glad you're thinking outside the box on this.
Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Good to see you. Anybody else in the room like to visit the commissioners this morning? Lindsay, anybody online? Thank you. That brings us to county clerk Perry Stevenson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Robby. Um, this morning you have the minutes for the October seventh, twenty twenty five BOCC regular meeting. Are there additions, deletions, or corrections? Thank you.
No liquor license?
No liquor license this morning.
Okay, first, under Commissioner Business, Delta County Assessor Jolene George with the presentation of the results for the twenty twenty five property assessment study. Go, Jolene.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
The pleasure to be with you all this morning.
You got a stack of papers there.
I know, right? Everywhere I go, they follow me. It's my pleasure to present to you this morning the findings of the two thousand twenty five property assessment study. This is an audit that's conducted by San Mateo Data Analytics. It's a third-party contracted firm that audits all county assessors across the state. So before I go into the findings and results of the audit, I thought it would be helpful to share a little bit about the background of the audit, you know, when it came to be and why, and why it's such an important part of what we do in the assessor's office. So the study was initiated back in nineteen eighty-two, when the Gallagher Amendment was passed by the people, so it's a constitutional amendment. And it addressed many things, but among those was were the findings that, at the time, in the early eighties, when they looked at assessment values across the state, they found a lot of non-uniformity in the valuations, and it was because some counties were valuing at, say, a nineteen seventy-six level of value, and other counties were still valuing back in the nineteen fifties. And so across the state, we had a lot of variation, and that was perceived as an equity issue for taxpayers. So now we have this two-year reappraisal cycle, where every two years, assessors reappraise all property in the county, and we all use the same appraisal date. So when you hear the term "level of value," that means appraisal date. And so, uh, this most recent assessment or reappraisal was based on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four level of value. So that is, um, in part what the assessment study looks at, is, uh, conformance with state laws and also the state constitution. So each year, when the auditor looks at our data, they perform both a ratio study and a market trend analysis. They look at procedural methodologies and also statistical testing for specific classes of property to make sure that we're following laws, and that we're ultimately putting out a fair and consistent valuation to our taxpayers. And in your packets, you have the audit, um, report. It's an eighty-page document. It's pretty comprehensive. It identifies our compliance within each of the areas of the audit, and I'm very happy to report that to you guys that are here this morning. This is such an important part of what we do because it's how we build and promote the public's trust in what we do. So the assessor's office handles a lot of data. We are responsible for a lot of things, and this audit is a way to show that, you know, someone outside of our organization is looking at what we're doing, and we're coming back in compliance. So it's, it's great. I think it's important. And of course, I have various members of my staff here with me this morning, who I have to give a shout out to for their shared values with our mission to, to do the best work we can for the taxpayers. So are there any questions about the study that I can answer?
What is a coefficient of dispersion?
What that is, is it's the dispersion of valuations among the mean of the property values. So you have a mean property value in a group, a data set, and the dispersion measures how much variation away from that mean that you're experiencing. And there are, um, statistical standards, so for vacant land, dispersion has to be less than twenty point ninety-nine percent. For residential, it has to be less than fifteen point ninety-nine percent. And that basically is, it's giving you a confidence interval of how tight your values are in, in a group, basically.
So coefficient is six point three two on residential is pretty outstanding.
It's really good. It's really good, absolutely. So a lot of things contribute to that, you know, we don't, this is an ongoing process. We're always looking at values and refining our appraisal models, and we had crazy market in twenty twenty-three, as we all know. And in twenty twenty-four, that market largely leveled out. We did still see some overall growth in the real estate market, but we're just able to dig into this deeper and deeper with time, and, you know, adequate resources to put out a good product. So, and I want to thank you guys for supporting our office in that.
Other questions?
I don't really have any questions, just comments. Thank you for your attention to detail on the reports and and being able to itemize all the different aspects of it, and a shout out to your crew for helping that. I know you couldn't do it yourself. You've got an outstanding office there that, uh, is following in your footsteps, and they are very competent in the jobs, and we appreciate that. We know the thing you're writing, and this audit shows that, that your attention to detail, you know what you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, staff. Appreciate all of you. They cover all sixty-four counties.
They're strictly for Colorado, then?
Yes.
So San Mateo does all this thing?
Yes. Sounds like a California name, but it's not. One of the little intros, it's, San Mateo is the patron saint of tax collectors, and so that's where they came up with their audit name, but yes, it sounds like a city.
How granular do they get? Do they, is it a sampling of the data set, or do they actually look at each and every sale evaluation?
We provide them all of the data, and then they go through and look at, um, all different kinds of information within it. So they'll look at a sampling of, say, the sales that were not used in the reappraisal process, and they say, why, you, you need to have a reason. You can't just unqualify a sale because you didn't like it, you know? And so they'll look in at a very specific level of what we're doing and how we're doing it to make sure that we're not, you know, biased in our valuations.
Was there any surprises for you or your staff when you got this audit back?
This is, uh, this is the first year with our new auditor, and so for the prior decade or more, we've had a different auditor. This is the first time they have been awarded this contract with the state. So they tried to make this process as seamless and as straightforward as possible, and I think they really did a good job with that overall.
Is there anything you want to point out to us? This is an eighty-page report. I've scanned through it. It's a lot. A lot of this data I don't quite understand, of course.
Um, nothing in particular. I, I always like to point out one statistical measurement that the auditor looks at, which is called the price-related differential. And what that does is it tests for whether you have a progressive or a regressive model based on the relative value of property. So in other words, are we undervaluing high-end properties and undervaluing lower-valued properties? And that is tested for, to make sure that's not happening, and we are right exactly where we need to be. Um, the range is between point nine eight and one point oh three for that statistic, and we're at one point oh. So we're not progressive or regressive. We're very equal in our valuations.
Well, I am, like my fellow commissioners, very proud of the work you guys do. It obviously shows that, that you care about what you do, so, thank you. You guys got an A+. I appreciate you bringing that to us, so we can see how this, this works. Will this be posted on our website? What do you do now with this audit?
So the file is kept with our office. This doesn't conform to the ADA requirements, this format or document, so it can't be put on the website currently. So we do keep it on file, though. It's, it's a public record, and anyone can access it.
Very good. Well, thank you, Jolene, and thank you all. Appreciate you coming over here just to see us, but your hard work is very evident here, and, uh, I hope you know, we got, we got your back on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your support, your support and your time this morning.
Yeah, we got to get a picture.
All right.
Hopefully, we get to everybody here.
We'd like all the visitor staff to come. We want to be recognized for a job well done, so thank you very much. Thank you, good.
Good morning. Somebody has to be impressed.
One, two, three. This will be in the paper promptly, so. Thank you, everybody.
Next for your consideration then is a resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on Delta County's processing of applications for battery and storage systems, and the unincorporated portions of Delta County pending consideration of amendments to the Delta County Welling Beach zoning act. Go on, Anne. Do you want to come forward? Commissioner Coons, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, we all know that aggravates and industrial solar is becoming more and more prevalent across Colorado, and we have been working diligently to come up with reasonable regulations on the battery storage industry, because these, it's going to be a later feature. We'd like to put it in front of it. Uh, I know, Sean, you've been working very hard to come up with some good regs. We reviewed it, had a work session. I actually have a consultant looking at it now also, or a statewide review of these regs. But I don't think we're quite ready to adopt and put them in our land use code. So it would be my recommendation to the board that we adopt a six-month moratorium, just let us finish this work. And then, point we do adopt it into our land use code, that moratorium will be lifted. Questions on this, John?
Well, I totally agree. I think this is something we got to get our heads wrapped around, and there's just too many moving parts here to move forward at this point. We just need a lot more time to look into this. There's a lot of concern as to, uh, the safety of these things, and the technology changes rapidly, so do it right, and do it once, and hopefully, uh, get these things going, but at this point, we're just not quite there yet, so I would agree with the plan's mission recommendation to halt this temporarily until we can get our heads wrapped around it completely and get something in the regs that makes sense for Delta County.
Mr. Bear, Mr. Gardner?
I don't think you have anything further, uh, Chair, other than to, um, Lord is welcome to see if there's any public comment, both in the room or online, if people are interested in weighing in on us.
Well, I will open this up to public comment. Does anybody in the room like to visit with commissioners on this? Lindsay, anybody online?
Yes, sir.
I would agree also. Hopefully, in this matter of time, the battery technology will evolve to where the hazards that might arise in battery storage can be lessened in the threat of a fire or toxic fumes, anything like that will be, I don't know, lower scale hopefully in the near future. And I think this is a good idea to make sure, like Commissioner Fuller said, do want to do, do right. Try to give the public and the industry a chance to read over what we would like to see happen, and, uh, give them a chance to come in with a, a more complete report and analysis of if they do submit something, if and when they do, you know, be the current technology and be a safe and environmentally friendly way to store the battery in, energy. Since the push is for clean renewable energy, these are some of the things that arise that we have to cross that bridge, where if we were still on fossil fuels, those inks and problems have been, for the most part, worked out, but here we have a new clean energy system that, uh, is new to us anyway, and there's been some issues with it, some other states, and we just don't want those issues in our state. Thank you.
So what would be the will of the board?
What's the resolution number? Why move that we adopt a resolution, the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Delaware State of Colorado, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five R forty-three, the resolution imposing a temporary moratorium on Delta County's processing of applications for battery energy storage systems in all unincorporated portions of Delta County pending consideration of amendments to the Delta Building regulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Thank you for your work on this, county clerk. Appreciate it.
Okay, next for consideration is ratifying the warrants.
Why move that we approve the warrants for the month of August twenty twenty-five from, uh, the various funds? The expenditures paid by warrant numbers one five five two seven oh through one five 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 zero seven and ACH transactions eleven eighty-seven through twelve seventeen from August first, twenty twenty-five, to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, totaling one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and three cents in account payable, and one million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents in monthly county human services and health department August twenty twenty-five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make the motion that we accept, uh, September twenty twenty-five payments, Delta County Board of County Commissioners warrants from General Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, Energy Development Fund, Fairgrounds Fund, Lodging Tax Tourism Fund, Enterprise Fund, E nine one one Fund, Government Development Fund, Contingency Fund, Grants Fund, Capital Improvements Fund, Employee Benefit Trust Fund, Conservation Trust Fund, Built Fund, Safety Improvement Fund, Booking Fees Fund, Inmate Fund, and Open Space Fund, Trust Fund, expenditures paid by warrants numbers fifteen fifty-five oh eight through fifteen fifty-seven fifty-six, and ACH transaction twelve eighteen through twelve four, twelve forty-seven from September first, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, totaling one million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one point forty-seven in accounts payable, and one million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight fifty-five in monthly county human services and health department, September twenty twenty-five payroll for items budgeted and approved per Delta County policy. Officer, is Chair to sign?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't forget to sign off in the back.
Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you for the schedule.
May, uh, at one thirty, a road and bridge work session. Three thirty, a board of health. October twenty-first, Cedar Edge trustee in Delta County at six P M.
Uh, board of health has been changed to.
Cedar Edge, October twenty-first, Cedar Edge trustee in Delta County. October twenty-second, agency rightful board meeting.
Is anybody going on that one?
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah. You'll be in person there?
I'll be there.
Try to zoom in a little bit.
Did you say it's October twenty-first? I'm sorry, Lindsay, I missed.
Okay. October twenty-first, Cedar Edge trustee in Delta County meeting.
No, that's November twenty-first.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
You're just making sure we're on time.
I am.
Big hands up.
Always living in the future. October twenty-third, our hard-ten board exec committee meeting. October twenty-eighth, board of health regular meeting. October twenty-ninth, uh, twenty twenty-sixth, department budget meeting, small day event, eight to five. October twenty-ninth, or October thirtieth, twenty twenty-sixth, department budget meeting. October thirty-first, Main Street Trick or Treat, here in Delta. I'm just turning that in for a good measure. Um, November third is a work session after action report on the Bella Back situation. November fourth is our next board of county commissioners regularly scheduled monthly meeting. Election Day. Thank you, Ms. Terry. Also, election day, please make sure your ballots are turned in. All locations are on our website. November fourth, that's.
Can we pause right there, please?
Yes, sir.
In the past, we've moved our County Commissioner meeting to accommodate election cycles.
This one is not as big as a general election, so.
Will be fine.
Yes.
Thank you, Lindsay, go ahead.
November fourth is a Republican Party meeting at six P M. November fifth, we are having coffee with Commissioner Craig Fuller at Sugar Mama's Cafe and Bakery in Cedar Ridge. That begins at seven A M. Everyone is welcome. There will be a free cup of coffee and great conversation with Mr. Craig Fuller.
What time is that start?
Seven A M. Sugar Mama's.
Seven or seven thirty?
Forty-seven thirty.
I got, I have.
Which one are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, seven thirty.
We can do it seven.
Do you want to do it? Let me see what I have on the page.
Yeah, see what you got with your.
Let me see what I have on the page. Thanks for keeping me. Okay, we have seven thirty online, so I'm going to change it on our website, seven thirty A M. Commissioner Fuller at Sugar Mama's. For a free cup of coffee. I'm sure one of us will be there. All right. November seventh at three thirty, I have a one Delta County Board meeting. November tenth, a Board of County Commissioners Work Session with Emergency Management. November eleventh at one thirty, a Board of County Commissioners Work Session with Road and Bridge. November twelfth, a CEU Wednesday meeting.
Let's go back to the eleventh. That's Veterans Day, but we've got a work session with Road and Bridge. Seems like that's a week off. It's usually the same day as the B O C C.
Yeah, so it would be the eighteenth.
Our next November event would be the one Delta County Annual Meeting on November fourteen. November eighteenth, Board of County Commissioners Regular Scheduled Meeting. There's also a public hearing, the twenty twenty-six budget hearing, November eighteenth at four twenty here at five sixty dot street. November eighteenth, one thirty to three is the Road and Bridge Work Session. And November eighteen, three thirty to four thirty is a Board of Health meeting. Does he take three hours? November twenty-first, six to seven thirty at the Cedar Ridge. Sorry, is that right?
Yes.
The Cedar Ridge Trustee and Delta County meeting. November twenty-seventh.
I'm sorry, Lindsay, it is the nineteenth. It is not the twenty-first, Friday is the nineteenth.
Okay.
Just double check the email.
Six to seven thirty P M.
Correct.
On the P M?
It's yours. Should be showing up on your calendars.
Okay, let me do this, right? We're all on the same page. I am getting today. There's not much I can do.
That brings us to Thanksgiving holiday.
Yes, so the. So, on November twenty-seventh, the offices are closed for Thanksgiving. And November twenty-eighth, offices are closed for the day after Thanksgiving.
Did we miss anything else? Okay. It takes some help to do some of the buries and that's where they call it. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order here?
Your jail report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Delta County detention facility population count report, this is for Sunday, October twelve, twenty twenty-five. Male inmates, county jail thirty-eight, female inmates, county jail two. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, two, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total of forty-four. Average daily inmate population for the week of October sixth through twelve is forty-nine point two zero. Seeing nothing other, nothing else for the Board of Commissioners this morning, we will recess until nine thirty. I don't see Matt Soper here to. We'll recess till nine thirty for County Attorney. Thank you, everybody. Well, it is nine thirty. We want to come back on the record. It is County Attorney, Mr. John Bear.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I have one item for the Board's consideration this morning, and that's the Board's consideration of an airport ground lease at Blake Field involving Hangar one fifty-five. That's date to Hartnell Living Trust. This is similar to some of the ones we've talked about in the last few months. There probably be more that are in the pipeline. This is an existing hangar that was built in nineteen ninety-four. That lease is termed and it's sold now, so we take this opportunity to go ahead and to update the lease and that sort of thing. So I don't see anything out of the ordinary here, and I recommend the Board approve this new lease. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Bear?
No, it seems like a routine deal.
But actually, I'm getting a made motion that we, that we grant an airport ground lease involving Hangar one fifty-five date to Hartnell Living Trust.
I second that.
And just authorize the Chair to authorize the Chair.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Why is it Mr. Hartnell?
Perry, I just want to think about it. Yeah, resolutions. Can I get a copy of that when you get recorded? Thank you. Mr. Bear, anything else for us this morning?
Thank you. That's all I have for the Board's consideration this morning.
Representative Soper indicated he is almost here.
Sheriff Taylor, have you got anything for us this morning?
You want to hear? Good to see you. Say hi.
Good morning. Do you know why?
Go on the recess first.
Oh, no. We will recess until ten o'clock. Human Services with Director.
Or until Representative Soper.
Either.
Oh, here we.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just in time.
Perfect. I actually brought something that I could tap it out to. Here, before we break out, I'd like to visit real quick. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Matt.
Good morning. I wanted to bring up penance for being a few minutes late. I just recently got back from Taiwan, so that's pineapple cake and tea, which are what they're most famous for. We definitely made sure that we had good Colorado beef also in Taiwan. That was part of what we were looking at while we were there. I wanted to come down today and have a conversation, so I'll show myself. That's important since it's my home county, but also to talk about sort of what we're looking forward to for the legislative session. This session, we're gonna probably be cutting another billion to one point four billion dollars from the budget again. It's definitely going to be a challenging year. As I know Delta County has been very familiar with, and so has a lot of other counties, I believe up to forty out of the sixty-four passing resolutions against unfunded mandates. It's something that's really troublesome. I know when the state doesn't have much money, they tend to pass it on to local governments. As you know, I'm chair of our local hospital board. We had a meeting last night and we were talking about the unfunded mandates passed down to us, so we also wearing, wearing that separate hat, would like to be able to support the county in whatever effort to be able to push back because I know that from a legislative front, the reality is I mean, I'm probably not going to get a support bill through, and that's just the reality of our political situation. But I also know that in terms of any sort of a lawsuit or standing together, we certainly can be very strong in doing so.
Matt, at last count, there were thirty-six counties who have filed, who have joined in on the fixer funded campaign of per front funded mandates. Just how serious is the legislature and the governor taking this?
Right now, I would say not very serious. I mean, just to be brutally candid.
We need to know this.
Yeah. There, there needs to be a few more of the bigger counties, particularly the Board of Denver County on board. That would really help. The other thing that would really help is a much bigger statement from the front range. I mean, I joined an op-ed last Sunday in the Sentinel with Representative Taggart and Senator Rich, also bolstering the conversation about unfunded mandates. And it kind of goes on silent ears when you're trying to convey a message, but it's not really getting much further than the continent by. And so what we really need is for a lot more of the counties, like Boulder County, if even Denver County. Once they're on board, legislation, the governor will take it more serious.
Boulder County outside.
Boulder County has.
They need to be more vocal.
We're hearing a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of frustration from Laramore, Jefferson, or Apo Ho on this unfunded mandate, so I hope this gains more traction with them.
And I do think, given the conversations with the federal government, because the state is feeling the same thing, that it is kind of a wake-up call that you can't complain about the federal government and then do the exact same thing to local governments. That's what it is. And I know last night with the hospital, we were talking that just by, and I know we're about to do some more partnering on Medicaid piece and being able to sign people up. But just that piece alone is several hundred thousand that it costs us. And that's just an unfunded mandate that came through. I didn't realize we would be part of Medicaid office, but we are. I'd kind of like to go through sort of a few of the bills I'm thinking of introducing next session, but if you have any specific questions, I can.
Go ahead.
Kind of, this session is one that I'm trying to push some of the bills that were unsuccessful in previous sessions in the last session. A problem that we've had in Delta County and in Mesa County and most counties is the situation where someone is arrested, they get a PR bond, they fail to appear at their court date, and then they're arrested again, they get a PR bond, they fail to appear at their court date, and they get a very long list of charges pending against them with different court dates. While that's not a huge percentage of the criminal defendant population, it is a large percent of the resources that are, are used. We ran a bill last session that was killed in House Judiciary. It would have said that after two failures to appear, the court could revoke the PR bond and replace it with a cash-only bond for the purpose of holding the defendant until their trial date. While I probably could have gotten it through if it only impacted county courts, we also had municipal courts included and C M L basically threw a major fit that if we were to cut them out at the last minute, they were fearful that municipal courts would never be included in any sort of a fix in the future. I don't know if that would have played out the way they thought it would, but that was their fear. So all of a sudden, an ally became someone campaigning against the bill because they didn't want a hostile. We're trying again this session to bring back the same concept. We've had a you know, a little bit of a change on committee member makeup. I don't think it's significant enough to really move the needle there. But we're looking once again at what can move a few of the Democrats on the committee because this really is a major problem that has impacted all of our courts and certainly our budgets. Another bill along the criminal justice side. During the pandemic, the Department of Corrections had a internal change in which they began releasing inmates early to try to deal with the pandemic, but they didn't want a wave of inmates coming back. And what they did is they began the early release parole process. But in doing so, they had to have a way to be able to kick them out earlier. So they changed facts on the risk assessment tool. And these were key facts, so there's questions that are asked. Has the inmate ever been convicted of a crime prior to age eighteen? Yes or no, and you get a score. The score was being changed, and we know this because Nine News began doing a series of news stories, and then they came to myself and to some other legislators and said, would you be willing to dig in deeper? We have, it's ended up being an interesting battle. If I end up dead, this is probably why. It almost feels like a John Grisham novel. But D O C has definitely been engaged in a pattern of early release, and ten percent of those individuals who committed murder in twenty twenty-four were these early release parolees in which D O C had changed their risk assessment. And we would like the parole board to have to consult all risk assessments throughout the inmates' time in the criminal justice system to see if there's any change that occurred.
Would that include the risk assessments prior to sentencing?
No. But any sentencing, so let's say you serve time from eighteen to twenty-five, and then you serve time from, say, thirty-five to forty. It would include each of those segments. But, but we're still drafting, so I mean, I mean, if you'd like to see a tweet, now's, now's the time because this is the time in drafting when it's kind of a beautiful time because nothing is set in stone and nothing has been dropped in the hopper to where you can't change something because usually when you drop it in the hopper, people panic because they see the words on paper, and the only way you can change it from that point is through amendment. And we can easily change the amendment process, but then you have to get the consent of other members, and that can be challenging. And when you still have a little bit of control now is the time to be able to draft whatever we want to say. So, so if you have a, an idea there, this was our initial idea to not cost a lot of money, knowing the fiscal situation, knowing D O C is likely to slap a major fiscal note onto it. But if there's any other idea for how we can tackle this, we would be interested because we're actually quite concerned. I mean, ten percent of all murders, that's a lot if we could prevent this. That's about seventy-one people that could have lived. The another bill that also failed last year, was vetoed by the governor, was one for Colorado Open Records Act Reform. And this is one where we kind of had a fatal mistake as bill sponsors, and in particular, one state senator is a little bit stubborn. She wanted to have a carve-out for the media. And the governor was very clear from the get-go that everyone had to be treated the same under court. So you couldn't have a shorter timeframe for the media, three days, and for the general public, five days. We knew that that was a problem. The governor kept his word and kept the bill. So we're still wanting to come back. I know this is year number three, but there are some major issues that we have, such as the short timeframe with compliance. I mean, I know you've seen it as a county, certainly with the hospital special district, it's been a major problem for us. Someone has a core request and three days is almost impossible to ever begin to comply with that. And then you get other smaller special districts, they have been saying the same thing. They may not even have a a custodian who has been well-trained within Colorado law. And so then you you just have a problem with bills. And we would like longer timeframes. We were working with John Calderon, the Independence Institute. They also want longer timeframes. They have a few other things that we are struggling to really accept, such as they want a much more robust process for suing local governments that I I have trouble signing on to. I mean, just to be honest, I don't think more lawsuits is the answer to getting more public information. But if there's things that you would like included, I can send a draft also. That's one that we have had drafted. It's pretty straightforward. The other elements would be right now under Cora, you can actually ask for all of the personal information of a student within our public school system and we would like to carve that out. You can also ask for the personal calendars of any public employee and we would like to make that not corable unless it's someone in management, like an elected official.
John, would you like to see that done?
I would.
I could see your eyes.
I will get that to you.
Please.
Sneak in outside.
Thank you.
A bill that is right now before the Year- Round Agriculture and Water Committee that I had asked for was to take on counterfeit fruits and vegetables. It's been a problem that's really been kind of creeping up on us. Maybe not so much in Delta County, but definitely down in Mesa County, it's become a major problem with Halisay peaches. What will happen is about April, someone will start selling peaches labeled Colorado grown Halisay at a fruit site stand. And we know that that's impossible. I appreciate the fact that you know, it might be that someone had a greenhouse with a peach tree, but you certainly don't have a truck full of peaches at that time of year. And it's consumer fraud at that point. We've seen a lot of this with grocery stores. We've seen it impact the Alata sweet corn industry, the peach industry, the potato industry from Soundless Valley, Pablo Chilies and the Rocky Ford cantaloupes. What will happen is our major grocery stores will buy just a little bit from a producer enough so that they can put all of the boxes and the signage that says Colorado Proud, Colorado Grown, and then they stop buying from Colorado producers. But they still leave the signs that say Colorado grown. And we would like to add that to our consumer protection laws that that's not lawful. They have a farm product in which you're labeling it as Colorado grown when in fact it's not. It's pretty straightforward. It's one that's already on the website for the legislature, so you can review that. I'd love to be able to have your feedback on that. We specifically took out a private right of action. Once again, that was because I am against private lawsuits in these regards. If anyone is going to bring a case, it should be the Attorney General because it needs to rise to a level that it's viewed as serious. I don't want to see one producer attacking another producer. And so cutting off that private right of action was very important to me. The other bills that I'm kind of still vetting and looking at what direction I really want to go. One is a funeral home cleanup bill. As you know, I have worked on a number of bills over the years, seven to be exact, dealing with the funeral industry. And these range from requiring licensure for those who work in a funeral home, but also updating our Colorado Wills Act. So we've certainly worked on the full range funeral issues. I never thought I'd become an expert in all things death. But certainly I have and even have been on the national speaking circuit, talking about other reforms to Colorado death pay industry law. However, that being said, we, you know, I'd like to say we get everything right all the time and you never need to correct anything. But there's a reason why we gave ourselves a year-long buffer until January first of 2027 for the full licensure law to take effect. And that's because we knew that there were a lot of cooks in the kitchen. A lot of people didn't know what the law actually was. They had seen so many drafts that people didn't know what was a draft and what actually was signed by the governor. And now we have much more of a clear idea because the industry's fully been able to read the legislation. But they're wanting to have certain key terms defined before there's a change in governor. And it's not that the governor matters here, but what matters is the Department of Regulatory Affairs. And the funeral industry is a little bit concerned that if we don't define terms like what's a satellite location in statute that the next head of DORA will come through with rulemaking and say that that person needs to also be a licensed funeral director rather than the licensed funeral director being at the local funeral home that's attached to the satellite location. These are important changes, not for the metropolitan area, but for rural areas. Because we don't want to leave the legislature and to see a change in both members in the legislature and those in DORA who enforce these laws to where they don't remember these conversations. And it's all new people there. The other thing we want to work on is making sure the licensure fee is lower for rural areas and that it's based on volume. That's also an area that was undefined. DORA took it upon themselves to have a flat fee, which has been really bad for funeral directors in rural areas. I probably haven't necessarily heard, but that's certainly been an issue that's come up a lot. It's a lot easier to deal with an increasing fee if you have large volume. If you have low volume, like we have here in Delta County, that hurts and it really hurts hard. And we want to change that and have it based on volume. The other bill that I'm kind of vetting out would be one to update our drone laws. Right now, we've certainly had some weaknesses within the law about enforcing drones flying both near airports and near other public safety infrastructure. And while we do have laws on the books, we would like to be able to strengthen those and to be able to give our law enforcement more tools here because drones are only going to become more of a everyday occurrence. It's not just the once in a great while that you see a drone in the air. They're going to be used more and more. I mean, we already see it from the real estate industry and people who just want to photograph something from the air. But there's more and more people have drones and they're curious. We also want to safeguard certain public assets that we really don't want drones interfering with. There is another bill that we're kind of vetting with Senator Catlin. There's an issue down in Montrose County concerning animal cruelty. The case has definitely grown much larger and much more nuanced than what we realized at first. So we're likely to kind of back off a change for now, just because we're a little bit concerned about timing and the fact that what we were told and presented at first appears to be a shifting story. And that's not a good, it's not a good environment to legislate in. It's better to wait and see how things go here than to run right out. But we're certainly open to anything. So these are the bills that I'm vetting, I'd introduce. Obviously, the date has not come to like drop them in the hopper for introduction, so I can still pull back or swap bills out. But these are ones that I'm certainly actively looking at.
Questions, comments?
On the failure to appear, there's two times that they would, would you give more support if that number was higher, like four times?
Probably. I I like the idea of three strikes and you're out. Because if you've been granted two instances of grace and mercy, by that third time, I think we need to have a little more of a love to resolve that particular case. I, I mean, I would say that there are individuals who would love it to be like, like twelve or four or some, something more than two. But then it I'm worried it wouldn't be effective. Because by the time you get to four failures to appear, I mean, you probably have a lot going on in your case. And it's not just bad for law enforcement. It's actually bad for the criminal defendant, that particular.
Well, thank you, Matt. Appreciate you coming to give us an update and thank you for the gift here.
No, absolutely. Just know that I'm always a phone call away or a text message away. Text is sometimes faster. And I think all three of you have my phone number. But certainly shoot me a text and I would love to be able to host you on the floor. This legislative session will be my last second legislature. It's one that, you know, if we can do whatever we want to do to help Delta County, now is the time to do it. I can tell you that my success in the legislature won't be from Delta County. And that's just because the two main candidates who are running are not from Delta County. And so if there's anything big that we can do this year, this is the time to do it. I'm at the senior level, not that that means a whole lot, but we should use whatever leverage we can this session to be able to help Delta County.
It's my understanding Delta County and many other organizations will be playing defense this year. If we're going to be up around a billion-dollar structural deficit again, where do you think these cuts are going to come? Because we don't have the reserve fund we did last year.
Yeah. I, I don't know if you saw the news, but CDOT announced that they're no longer going to be having live-streamed videos along the major roadways. And they're going to go to black and white images. That's one area that they're already cutting. It hurts because the general public utilizes the cameras every single day. And I, I say that as an example. We're going to see the Polis administration do more of those particular cuts to impact everyday working Coloradans where they have issues that they can cut. They have an entire green agenda. We have so many tax credits for e-bicycles, e-cars, or electrifying your home for buying electric appliances and not natural gas. If we were to get rid of all those alone, that is at least a hundred million dollars. And that was a member who kind of added up all of these rebates, tax credits and deductions from last year. So that would be a good start to get rid of those things. I mean, those may be nice wishes, but those certainly are not life safety. To me, a live-stream camera on our major passes is about life safety. That when we have anyone in this room who's traveling to Denver during the winter months, it's very important to be able to see what you're getting into ahead of time since we have the technology. I mean, if we never had that technology, that's one thing. But since we have the technology and our mountain passes are utilized by the entire nation, not just us who live in Colorado, I believe we have an obligation to make sure that everyone is well-informed on what they're getting into on the mountain passes ahead. And for that to be an area where the government cuts, that's wrong.
The structure is already in place.
Yeah, exactly.
So what are they asking? Does it come up with a number of what they're going to say by canceling this?
Eight million dollars. Eight million dollars.
Eight million dollars.
It's like thirty pieces of silver.
It's been widely publicized that Colorado has increased their workforce between four and five thousand individuals in the last seven years. Is there any discussion on reduction in force?
With the state government, yeah. We have raised that issue. As far as it being taken serious, I've not heard any chatter that it's actually being acted on. They, they seem to have no desire to reduce their workforce. Which is, which is hard because I mean, that's, that's the largest part of a budget is your
Labor.
Is your labor.
Well, or that. If you're running a deficit like that, they have to look everywhere.
Oh, absolutely. And
I mean, it's structural. It's not
It is structural.
It's self-inflicted. How many times have we heard it's not a revenue problem, it's a spend problem?
It is completely. And you can, I mean, as you're aware, you can plan and budget for most things that you want. But you've got to prioritize what that's going to be. And you can't say, I want my cake and I want my icing and I want the candles on top and I want everything that goes with it today.
At a school district meeting the other night, the other morning we were there, the topic of moving funding of education prior to, earlier in session, like it used to be, came up and Janice Rich was very engaged with that idea. Is that possible to do so that education gets funded first?
I think that is possible. I mean, it was not that many years ago that that was
That was the standard.
I do think that it's possible to be able to move that up into the session. It actually is a practical issue that would help everyone in the legislature. Because right now, there's two big question marks. One is what's left in the budget for the legislature to use after we spend money for education? Because that is one of two things that we have to do. I mean, we have to do our, our annual education spend and then we have to do the balancing of the budget. And those are the only two constitutional obligations we have. But every member wants to know what's left over. And it's easy to say that nothing's left over, but certainly if we get education done first, then we can fight over all the other stuff. But it's important to prioritize our kids. With that, there is an issue I am actively working on for our school district and I may have brought that up the other day during the joint meeting. But it's the Delta County schools are lumped in with Mesa County schools and it's all over mileage. And we're trying to get that changed because we actually baked in a really unfavorable federal rule into state statute. The speaker is very much willing to change that. Unfortunately, once it got into law this session, now we're having to deal with the issue of, well, it's already state law. And so we're, we're still working on how to massage that. I knew that was going to be a problem, which is why I had a very long force speech against having that included. Because you could kind of see the writing on the wall that once something hits the statute books, it's just
We're going to be close on time.
Yeah, it's so hard to remove it. Thank you.
Matt, the other thing I would, I'm going to wrap up with this. The other thing I would ask is that you encourage, because I don't think we've been able to force this, you encourage your fellow legislatures anytime they introduce a bill that the fiscal note is kept up to date, particularly on local governments. I really believe that we're, if the legislature is going to introduce a bill, they have the responsibility to make sure that the fiscal notes are accurate. They don't have to be precise, but they need to be accurate. Because those roles part back into the unfunded mandates, they just ignore us.
I know we're on time, but I just want to say thank you so much for this time.
And we have next, Human Services, Danny Gayle. She should be on her way here.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
We'll take it quick. That needs two minutes.
We'll come back online for Human Services. We know through the records that Mr. Green has stepped down. He has an option appointment to go to and making him Thank you. So, hey, good evening.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today on this wonderful Halloween-ish month. Very exciting. So we will start with Nicole and financials.
The payables, um, of this report, there's a lot of spending, the LEAP money, the federal state money they give us for the LEAP program and travel costs for new case workers, which is reimbursed by the state. And some last purchases for the Family Voice Grant. But other than that, there's nothing specific to highlight if you have any questions regarding the payables report.
How many dollars of LEAP money did you have?
So we spent every cent. It was twenty thousand dollars for outreach specifically and seven thousand something for admin. So that went to payroll. And then this upcoming year, we haven't received the outreach amount yet because the federal shutdown. But the admin part of LEAP, we got double, almost more than double. We got sixteen thousand, which will cover the payroll. Um, the payroll mostly and operating costs of staff that work the LEAP program. Which is us having office hours, two, two hours a day, um, I think it's eight to. Eight thirty to ten thirty Monday through Friday. And she, um, luckily is an English Spanish speaker, so they can come in and work any questions. And work on the applications, and then she'll spend extra time. We also are gonna pay the front desk workers too, since they do handle the intake of the LEAP, um, applications. And, uh, we're gonna use them as walking billboards as well, we got them working shirts that say, ask me about LEAP on them. Which was part of the outreach funding that we spent.
Yeah, yeah, that LEAP application, is it, uh, on the computer or manual?
There's both, um, so, uh, the ones that have, were applied last year, they'll have been made an application. Already last month in September, we'll have printed ones at the desk, the front desk. And by request, and they're also online in multiple languages, the state handles that. And they're all processed through Good, the Goodwill that we have an MOU, I believe, that we, with, yeah.
There are some counties that process LEAP, um, in-house, but, um, the majority of small and mediums don't.
Except like, Tatiana works a lot of hours just helping get their applications to the, the place of going to Goodwill to get them. Processed fully, so I can't imagine how much time and people we would need to actually do the applications for accounting.
It also helps on the backend, so if there is a denial, she will work with the individual to figure out what that denial reason is for. And navigate to move towards the approval process.
Very diligent follow-ups. And we did, part of, since we're talking about LEAP anyway, we did, um, drop off almost a thousand black and white composition notebooks. To all the schools within the entire county, and that notebook was kind of branded for LEAP. Where at, thank you, um, had the information on how to get to the application, um, that they could call, go online. Um, or come in person and it had the dates on there. So we also, uh, did pencils and fidget spinners to all the schools. So it's all kindergarten through high school, all about them, it was fun to visit all the schools again. So then, moving on from the payables to budget, we should be at sixty-seven percent at the end of August. We are at sixty-seven point seven, and we are slowly coming down to that, maintaining at that level we're supposed to be at. No, um. Expenditures we're seeing upcoming that would be out of the normal, um, we're maintaining boring status. Which is good, I mean. Are there any questions on the budget? I think for our grant, we expended everything for eight cents, maximize that.
Every penny counts. Okay, so then next week, um, for this, um, session and meeting this month, we don't have any contracts or MOUs or anything. So no action items other than department updates, so we can start with those. Um, I'm gonna start with the self-sufficiency program, and we initially outlined some stuff with CCAP, which we can go into. But I think what's pressing on everyone's mind is what's happening with SNAP, and so wanted to give, um, an update regarding that. So we did get some information and guidance from the state to start sending out. So Lindsay and I met yesterday, um, I believe it was on even on media and news in Grand Junction yesterday as well. Um, so what is happening is that because of the federal shutdown, they have not guaranteed or secured funding for SNAP benefits starting in November. So, um, anyone who applies from the fifteenth of October through the end of the month, they go into a pending status. Any case comment is automatically generated that says, due to the shutdown, they're in this pending status. So we're still collecting applications, we're still entering them as much as we can, but there's gonna be no November issuance, they will only get October benefits. Um, so depending on how long this goes, um, that means that it could go through half of November, through some of November. It just depends on when they can allocate that funding once the shutdown is over. So this is for, it's nationwide, but will affect, um, all of the families, um, individuals who are receiving SNAP benefits currently. And new applications, so, um, what we've done is we've outreach with the, um. Uh, bank, uh, Food Bank of the Rockies for the western, um, region, and so they're going to double their allocation for this next month of distributions. Uh, we've also outreach some of the food banks as well as the state has, they have held some meetings and outreach them, um, through their own stakeholder process. To help, um, generate food, Lindsay and I talked about, um, having a, um, uh, maybe a distribution of a call to action. Of individuals who would want to donate to food banks, um, and they may be extending their hours. Um, right now, they have selective hours, but they may need to extend that depending on what the situation looks like. Um, we've also talked to the school district, who's going to be sending out messaging as well. And preparing, um, internally what they can do to ensure that kids have food on a regular basis within the school day. Um, and so if there's some modifications of what they can send home also, um, they will make those modifications as needed. So, um, the messaging is going out, um, I think there's gonna be a lot of media on it, um, and you'll see that piece of it. But there are, um, you can call two-one-one, you can go to the website and look at all of the food banks and food resources that are in our community. We have a food resource guide as well, um, whi- which we've put out, but there's also messaging going directly to clients. From, um, the CBMS system, so they're getting messages through text messages and mail. Um, I think we're also gonna put it on the banner, has a banner on our, um, Delta County website. And if they go on to Peak to find, see that same messaging, so it's trying to be consistent messaging, which is nice. Um, all the counties are aligned in that piece, and, um, the press release from Governor Polis came out last Thursday, I believe. So everybody's mobilizing to message, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
Do we know the scale for Delta County?
So, um, if you look at our numbers right now, um, and see, we are, we too are. Um, SNAP caseload as of last month was one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four. About five hundred and seventy thousand.
So how are the food banks able to double their output?
I don't know if they'll be able to double, I know Food Bank of the Rockies, which is the truck that comes once a month, they're able to do that. They said that they were planning on, on doubling their distribution, food banks are gonna probably have to either increase donations. Um, whether that's from the community and others involved, we're looking at internally, we have, um, some funding, uh, that we had used for, um. Food insecurity as well as medical insecurity during the time of the unwind of PHE. And we were able to secure some gift cards for those, so in emergency situations, we have that as well. Um, and so we'll be kind of navigating what that looks like and how internally we can help for those individuals coming in and in need. But I think the community will see it, and so I don't know, uh, depending on each food bank, what that means for that, if they can. What, if their hours will change, if they'll have space to hold any ongoing donations, but that will be the call to action.
That's the other problem, is a lot of those organizations are volunteer, right? All of a sudden, you got double the food you're trying to distribute, and you got, you don't have a, a pool that's, you know. Twenty people deep, I don't think you can just call and say, hey, show up tomorrow for extra four hours.
Our coordinator, we have a coordinator in our department that deals with the Food Bank of the Rockies. And we've, we've already discussed if we need to pull more staff, uh, because we already extended, I think, four or five staff members, yeah. Yeah, so if we need to, we'll commit more staff to that. Uh, Food Bank of the Rockies actually places orders for their food, and I don't know how that all works or where they place their orders from. But they were planning on trying to double their order in order to be able to serve those, those additional people, so.
I think the state call too said they were gonna help try and get cash, because cash would, uh, trends would help them buy more. Because they could get more for less using cash, I was in that meeting on Friday.
The food bank were able to get more with cash.
Uh, yeah, but they could purchase more, um, with cash versus not, and I think the state was trying to help them with that on Friday.
One of the other things we're trying to work on, and, and the state is working on this, um, at a much larger scale. But as soon as that messaging started coming out, there were vendors who were, um, refusing to then accept EBT. Um, cards at grocery stores and, um, individual stores because they were afraid that they wouldn't get funded. And so they were denying the use of them even for their October benefits, so the state's trying to get ahead of that as well. But it's, it's coming at a holiday time, um, so it's, it's going to be rough and we'll be. Working through messaging and trying to support internally and externally as much as we can for the community. I will keep you updated, um, throughout the month what we hear, so that that way you guys are aware. Because I, I imagine you may get calls, I imagine our call volume will increase, um, our lobby, um, walk-ins will increase. And so you may see some of that as well.
Do you foresee any problems in that area, just the walk-ins, the line, call lines increasing?
Frustration, probably, and just trying to explain why and what's happening, um, so trying the text, tech of the day, we'll be navigating some of that at the front desk. So, um, they're kind of beefing up their conversations and what they can have and how to support those individuals and having those conversations, because it's hard. It's uncomfortable conversations and we don't have a lot of control over it, but when people can't meet their basic needs and feed their families, you know.
Do you think the, um, grocery stores, have they been looped in on the training? Just thinking that those frontline individuals will be even more impacted than perhaps even us.
Mm-hmm, I think that they were having some conversations, especially with the EBT piece of it. Um, but that was where some of, that's, I think it's happening more at a state level. Um, they didn't speak too much, I think, of, of that outreach on the call of what they're doing with that initiative, but we can find out.
I think they said something about outreach to them, because they were starting to hear more of them denying the use of the EBT card. But I don't think it said exactly what it was gonna say, that was in the Friday, Friday morning, little statement.
Any other questions on that one? Alright, so, um, moving on to CCAP, we, um, have some new rates coming in. And so as a part of, um, that changing allocation and as a part of the rules that were implemented, um, last year. Uh, this is a part of the tiers that change, and so we've changed some of those rates. Um, they're updated here, and, um, I think we've actually begun to see a few more, um, applications come in of providers. As well as another childcare center. So I think we're seeing some, some of those numbers grow and knowing some of the work requirements that we were concerned about. And having to establish, um, more secure childcare options, uh, it's growing little by little. Um, and I think we'll continue to hope it grows, um, in our work with our early childhood council. Um, so then moving on to, um, child welfare, uh, one of the things that. Happens when you're fully staffed and you have a few new ones is you have to send them to training. And so, um, the state has changed their training dramatically once COVID happened. So it was always in person and you had some regional areas, and then when COVID happened, they went all virtual for a while, which was difficult. And then they moved back to a hybrid setting. Unfortunately, that hybrid setting currently is in La Jolla.
Creates some challenges.
You pull up Kansas somewhere.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure, we've offered the Rubido Room multiple times for this setting. And we'll continue to do that to help our Western Slow Partners as well. So, um, that's a piece that they're going through, um, especially which, you know, changes a little bit of the dynamics in my office. Um, but there's some other things about group supervision and things that I think Matt might want to share.
Yeah, I just as far as the, the staffing update and training, it's just created some challenges with three of them going across the state. For multiple days, uh, including just the access to county cars and things like that. So, once they're fully trained in, in November, we're, we're hopeful that that will. Make it a little easier for our caseworkers to, to manage some of the things they have going. Um, as far as some of our practice changes, um, you know, our staff is really looking into the differential response practice model. That, um, Delta County, I believe, implemented last year, is that right? And so there's some components to that around group supervision, where we, um, have our supervisors and caseworkers. Use a, a framework tool to help us kind of navigate some of the cha- more challenging cases and, and case decisions. Um, so we're hopeful that'll help our performance in our court involved cases. And hopefully help us partner with families in, in a more genuine way. Uh, another piece of it is to hold family engagement meetings. And hopefully, when I say partner with families, is helping them be a big part of the decision-making for what happens in their child. With their children in, in a child welfare case. So we'll be continuing to, to work at that, and you can see, we've seen a slight reduction in our placements. And I do think with, with some of the implementation of that practice, um, it will help us serve families in their, in their homes. And hopefully keep more of our chi- children and youth in our communities. Uh, so we'll hopefully see that trend continue. Uh, so that's one of the big practice changes, one of the other big updates that we had is, um, we were able to be successful in returning our out-of-state youth. That was in placement, so there was nothing proven in there where we were able to find a placing, a placement closer to home. Which I know has been something we've updated to all on, and kind of a big challenge for us as well. Any questions, Matt, any of those?
Well, thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and then adult protection, um, they have had some changes, especially with the risk tool and, um. And they're rolling out some of those trainings and what it will look like. We've talked about it a little bit in the past of, you know, highlighting seventy items that you have to check specifically within that. Um, which can be very tedious and also doesn't really speak to, is this individual safe? Um, and are we really assessing them the right way? So I think staff were a part of some of the implementation stakeholder meetings that they had, and so now they're ruling that out in training and, um. And I think you guys are participating in a bit of that, so.
Yeah, there's just, it's a three-phase project to hopefully help our caseworkers with their capacity and their caseload. So then there's less redundancy in the documentation, and so that's the big news in APS right now.
Um, and in the last update, I should have put it with self-sufficiency, but I forgot, was that with, one of the mini grants, um, that we received from HICPuff. Will allow us to start in this next month of doing some overtime into our, um, homeless shelters. So we'll allow our staff to be able to be in the shelter outreach and secure, um, applications and processing. One of the difficulties with some of the, um, that population is that they may come in and apply, but if we need a follow-up. It's hard to find them, track them down, ensure we get the right verifications to ensure that they get a full application processed. And so as a part of that, they are, um, allowing our staff to do some overtime work to go into the shelter. Um, and we've talked with Cheryl, um, and the board from, um, Abraham Connection, who are very happy to come in and do those pieces. And secure some stability for, for those that, that population that struggles to, um, stay, um, stay in a status where they are approved for SNAP or Medicaid. So, um, we'll have that through this next six months of the shelters being around and, and, uh, provide that outreach, so. Excited about starting that, what it'll look like. Any other questions for us?
Tell your staff, thank you.
We do, we do, and I think, you know, the, our staff really appreciates your support as well, um, and we won't be having the huge Halloween that we have. But we are gonna have a booth and do some trick-or-treating things, and it's always hard when it's processing at the end of the month and with so many things that are going on right now. There's a lot of pressure there, so we're working through that, but still celebrating, so don't leave us out just yet, we'll let you know in the afternoon, this will be good. Sounds good, and we'll keep you updated as much as possible, thank you.
Thank you very much.